Welcome back. We will be taking public comments after our recognitions and awards, which will go for a few minutes here. If you're here and wanting to make a public comment and you haven't filled out one of these green cards, please get one from Mrs. Carpenter and fill it out. And there may be some back there. Deb Madden has some, so just raise your hand if you haven't filled one of these out. We appreciate that. Let's move forward with our recognitions awards. I think Mrs. Wilhelm is -- she is. She's gonna help.
All right. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our special guests and business partners this evening, and ask Mr. Jim Smith, Director of Community Development, to come forward to the business partner recognition portion of the evening. To our honorees, if you would come down the middle aisle when I call your name, then you'll avoid all these cords over here. Save yourself from tripping. First, I'd like to call up Scott Zurger, Executive Director of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, and several Foundation Board members, Brad Eckright, Mark Falls, David V. Brock, Adrian Shands, Jim Smith, who's already up here, and Rita Ashley, and Harlan Parker, if you'd like to join them, and Larry Bott. Sorry, Larry.
Awarded.
We're just getting ready. Members of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board of Directors would like to present two giant checks to the Board of Education. First, a check for $28,784.76 to support the 2006-07 mini-grants. Twenty-five grants were awarded to teachers and administrators at 18 schools for innovative -- there's that word again -- programs. The second check is for $15,000 to support extended learning grants during the current semester. These funds will support grants involving targeted students in small instructional groups focused on raising student achievement. And I'd like you to help me thank the Olathe Public Schools Foundation and its generous donors for continuing to make a difference in the lives of students and educators. Just kidding. Next, we'd like to recognize Donder Paul, CEO, and Reba Paul, CFO, of Tax Wizards. Tax Wizards is a one-stop shop for accounting, bookkeeping, mortgage services, and income tax preparation. The Pauls have established their business based on strong core values and an old-fashioned notion: to provide courteous customer service to each client accurately and professionally. As CEO, Donder Paul brings a lot of administrative experience to the business, focusing on the areas of marketing, technology, recruitment, and mortgage financing. She has an 11-year-old son, DeAndre, who attends Rolling Ridge Elementary School. As CFO, Reba Paul is responsible for managing Tax Wizards' financial obligations, including growth, budgeting, and forecasting for future growth. Reba and her husband, Mark, have four children, Mark Jr., Asia, DeMarcus, and Ebenee, who attend Haven Croft, Indian Trail, and Olathe North. God, I'm covering. The Pauls have established a scholarship fund as part of their commitment to youth and are offering $500 scholarships per year, which is very generous. They will partner with Haven Croft and Rolling Ridge Elementary Schools, the Retired Employees' Association, and the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, and will give back a portion of tax referrals to their partners. Please help us welcome them as a partner with the Olathe School District.[271.83][271.83](applause) Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Adrian Shands, who's been up here before, Branch Manager and Assistant Vice President for Metcalfe Bank. Metcalfe Bank is an employee-owned bank, which means their associates have a special interest in serving you. The Olathe branch on Black Bob just celebrated its second anniversary, and a second location at 159th and Ridgeview is planned to open in 2007, summer of. Adrian has been with Metcalfe Bank for three and a half years, and she has three children in the Olathe School District: a sophomore at Olathe South, an eighth grader at Indian Trail, and a sixth grader at Haven Croft. She also serves on the Board of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. Metcalfe Bank is partnering with Haven Croft Elementary to help teach students the concept of money management and saving for the future. On February 15th, Metcalfe will start a branch at the school, where with their parents' permission, students can open account there. Students will make their deposits on Wednesday mornings, and to help their accounts grow, Metcalfe Bank has generously offered to match an official -- an initial $5 deposit with a matching $5. Can we all [laughs]. We appreciate Metcalfe Bank's interest in providing these learning experiences for our students, and welcome the bank as a partner with Haven Croft Elementary School.[384.03][384.03](applause) Will Alex Parkinson and Jesse Egan, and their debate coach, Josh Anderson, and Kathy Hilliard, Assistant Principal at Olathe Northwest High School, please come forward? Olathe Northwest is now the home of the number-one debate team in Kansas. With a perfect 7-0 record, juniors Alex Parkinson and Jesse Egan won the Debate Coaches Invitational Tournament held in January. They are only the third junior team to do so in the 24 years of this tournament, and the first junior team ever to go undefeated. To compete in the Debate Coaches Invitational Tournament, the best teams from across the state submit applications, and a select committee of coaches ranks the teams. Only the top 24 are accepted to compete, and Alex and Jesse were ranked third going into the tournament. Alex and Jesse will hold their title as the top debate team in Kansas until January, when they will compete to hold the title a second year, and we wish them the best of luck. Let's congratulate them on this outstanding.[464.81][464.81](applause) Did you bring any family members with you this evening?[483.03][483.03](laughter) [applause] Oh, please stand up.[498.41][498.41](applause) Next, we'd like to recognize Richard Belsky, Debate and Forensics Coach at Olathe North High School. Unfortunately, he couldn't attend the meeting tonight, but we would like to recognize him for earning the honor of wearing his second diamond in his National Forensic League pin. The National Forensic League is an educational honor society whose purpose is to encourage and motivate high school students to become proficient in the forensic arts of debate, public speaking, and interpretation. A letter to Richard from the National Secretary said, "You have consistently given your students a comprehensive and complete training in the art of communication. The second diamond is a visible symbol of the esteem in which we hold you for having trained so many in the skills of effective leadership." We thank Richard and congratulate him on this honor.[552.04][552.04](applause) Next, I'd like to call forward Dr. Tom Berry, Principal of Olathe East High School, and Olathe East faculty members. Congratulations to Dr. Berry and the entire staff of Olathe East School for achieving the Kansas Standard of Excellence in Staff Development for the 2005-06 school year. Olathe East will be recognized with the Professional Learning Communities Award at the Kansas Staff Development Council's Spring Conference in Wichita on February 9. At Olathe East, most of the staff development occurs with small groups of teachers and professional learning communities, and recent state assessment and standardized tests show significant improvement that directly correlates with the new staff development initiatives, including the small -- the professional learning communities. And Dr. Berry, upon learning of the award, said, "I am so proud of the work of this faculty, our school improvement team, and our entire staff as we continue to work together to increase the learning of our students." And Dr. Berry, I think you had a few words you wanted to say.
Thank you. Very proud of these teachers, as they represent our entire staff. They do a tremendous job, and their dedication is just unfailing for Olathe East. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for your support in allowing us to move towards something called Professional Learning Communities. You know, when we move towards something new, I know there's always a, you know, what is this? How is it going to help us? We believe that these teachers and their dedication are helping our students to achieve excellence, and I think we're getting better every year. Those kids are just doing a great job. I'd like to introduce them tonight. Here, we have Madeline Getzinger from our Special Needs Department, Julia [laughs] -- nervous. Imagine that.[671.51][671.51](laughter) All right. Joanne Hyatt from our Mathematics Department also, and Dick Lukert from our English Department. Again, I'd like to thank them. I think without the support of Dr. Banikowski, Dr. Sanders, and of course, Dr. All, and everyone here at the district level, we wouldn't be doing the things that we're doing as well.
Thank you all. Last but not least, I'd like to call up Kate Thompson, member of the Executive Council of Olathe NEA, and Nick Holmes, Olathe Northwest High School Senior, for a special presentation on Read Across America.
We have pause.[731.01][731.01](laughter) Just so that you all can hear. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you so much for all you do to help the children in the Olathe District Schools. We ask so much of you and ourselves, and we all know there are times when we wish we could do more. Tonight, I'd like each of you to do something personal. I would like you to do it with me. I would like for you to commit to take half an hour on March 2nd, which is a Thursday, 2006, to read with a child. March 2nd is the 102nd anniversary of Theodore Geisel's birthday. As you all know, Theodore Geisel, the cat -- the author of the Cat in the Hat books. On March 2nd, to honor Dr. Seuss, the National Education Association, the Kansas NEA, and the Olathe NEA are sponsoring a celebration of reading we call NEA's Read Across America. Our goal is to have every child in every school reading with a caring adult for at least 30 minutes. We have some noble company in this effort. Co-sponsors include the American Library Association, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America, the International Reading Association, National PTA, Kiwanis International, Girl Scouts of the USA, and the Screen Actors Guild Foundation. We would like you to join us by endorsing this program. We would like you all to personally commit to reading at the school listed on your invitation. Each of you have an invitation along with this wonderful t-shirt that I'm presently modeling for you.[850.13][850.13](laughter) And we'd like you to do whatever you can to publicize this celebration. Dr. Drummond, I take my hat off to you and metaphorically the shirt off my back, and I ask that you and the other board members explore the possibility of joining us in our goal of having every child in every school in our community read too, and to celebrate Dr. Seuss's 102nd birthday. When we work together as a community to encourage our children to read, to quote Dr. Seuss, "There's no limit to the places you'll go." Thank you very much.
Thank you.[884.69][884.69](applause)
My colleagues will be getting in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
We thank you not only for the t-shirt, but for the challenge and opportunity and all that you do for our children. And it's a good challenge for all of us to accept, and I think probably most of us, not all of us, will. Thank you very much. And we want to thank everybody who was here to receive a reward, recognition night. Our school district could not be what it is without the involvement of the many people who make everything work on a daily basis. This is a time for our public comments. I have one card here of one gentleman who wants to make a public comment, or maybe others. If there are any others here who want to make a public comment, please fill out one of the green cards, and Deb Madden has them, so if you are here and haven't filled out a green card yet, just wave your hand, and she'll find you and give you one of these registration cards. You can come forward, Mr. Clark. Come on up here, and I'll read this statement as you come forward. "At each regular meeting, the Board reserves a limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium and stand in front, and please state your name and address."
Was that just for my benefit? Terry Clark, 14016 West 135th. Something I wanted to talk about, and kind of wanted to be the first person on camera in the district. I think the district has a little bit of a problem with conflict of interest, and there are several board members here, and two of you are sitting right there. I wanted the district to know that I called around and asked, and I asked Mr. Deaner, I asked Pat Hall, Mr. Drummond, how much money anybody had in their banks that sits on this board? And I found out that nobody knew until I did a Freedom of Information Act request, and I asked Mr. Gilmore, and Mr. Gilmore didn't know. Through exchange of emails, I found out that the district has in excess of $7 million in Mr. Gilmore's banks, security savings banks. Through another exchange of emails, Mr. Gilmore said that we'll just have to agree to disagree, that it's not a conflict of interest. You all have a policy, and in that policy it says conflicts of interest, but it also says even an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I don't know how anybody can rule on spending money when that money could come out of his banks and not be a perceived conflict of interest. And there's another conflict which I brought up. It's the fact that we ended up with a $1.6 to $2 million building on TLC campus, and Mr. Drummond, you were instrumental in engineering that project. And I don't know how, as CEO of that organization, you can not have a conflict of interest in appearance. And I think this board needs to take a look at it, at what you're doing. Any comments?
We will. You can proceed, and we'll respond to you.
I wanted to talk to Mr. Churchman. I've heard him mention that our teachers are 26th paid in the state of Kansas. I want to point out that I don't think money's the issue. Money doesn't get you great grades. The highest-paid teachers in the state of Kansas are in Shawnee Mission. They make $62.2. That's the average teacher. Your average teacher makes a little over $41. You're number three in Johnson County in grades. They're dead last. They're number six. Money's not the answer. What I suggest is that -- you just had an article in a paper, the Central Elementary was number one in reading and, I think, math scores. They scored 100% proficiency, right? Did anybody or any teacher at that school get a bonus?
You need to direct your comments to the Board President. I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at you.
I'm looking at you, and I'm just --
He said, the entire Board, you're one of them. Did anybody at Central Elementary get a bonus?
We'll respond once you sit down, Mr. Mark.
I'd like to go ahead and respond, if I may. Dr. Drummond, first off, Mr. Clark, thank you for coming here tonight. Part of our community conversation is to have people like yourself and other members of the community come forth and talk to us about what their issues are. Teacher's compensation is certainly a priority of mine, and it will be for every day that I'm on this Board. I think as we look at our community conversation that was presented to us here tonight, whether we're talking about parents, we're talking about teachers, or we're talking about students, teacher salaries is one of the top priorities. So, I will continue to beat that drum regardless of where it is that we're ranked in the state of Kansas, and currently we are, to the most recent data, ranked 26th. Certainly, pay-for-performance is something that we've discussed as a Board. I've talked to Dr. All about taking that into professional counsel and getting some more information on that. What does that look like? As we look across the country, there's a lot of data out there. Denver, as a fact, is doing pay-for-performance for teachers, and so that's something that we need to look at. Is it, in my view, something that should be the basis for our teacher salaries? Absolutely not. Do I believe that we should reward them where merited for over and above achievement? I think that's something that we should talk about. So, that's my view. I continue to say teacher salaries are extremely important, particularly in the district of Olathe here, and I appreciate your comments.
One other thing on the teacher compensation. We're falling behind in this country in engineering and math to India, Pakistan, China, Asia, it doesn't matter, Japan. What I don't understand is why we would pay, and no offense to the gym coaches, why would we pay a gym coach the same base salary as we would a science or math teacher? Why are we paying more for the curriculum that's needed to elevate these kids? You just had the NEA up here wanting to have reading emphasized. Currently, do any of you know what the less and proficient ranking is for Olathe North or South tonight? Do any of you?
I'd have to look it up, Mr. Clark.
It's 30% at North and 28% at South, or less than proficient reading when they come out of high school. To me, that's a disaster. You can give all the awards you want. If the kids can't read, it doesn't matter. Now, why we're focused on other things, the pay, whatever, why don't we give teachers a bonus that do? Tie it to performance. We have a No Child Left Behind we can use. When you have a school that gets 100% on their performance test and No Child Left Behind, what do they get? An article in the paper? Put a little something in their stocking. Then, the ones who don't, like Prairie Center Elementary, that went from first to 30th in four years, somebody needs to be out there finding out what's going on, and administrator's head should roll. Somebody should get their salary cut.
I think your time is up. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
In responding to one of his questions regarding conflict of interest, I think Dr. All's done some research with our attorneys, and Dr. All, if you want to share some of that information, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. I did -- Dr. Drummond, as Board President, did ask me to look into what the statutes expect for conflict of interest, and I did have Mr. Mike Norris, the Board's attorney, review this. He reviewed the Board minutes, and he reviewed the statutes, and he consulted with the Ethics Commission of Kansas. And in review of all that, according to Kansas law, I'm sorry, is that when a board member is expected to abstain from any action in regard to contracts and into action that may be a conflict of interest. And then, in both in Mr. Gilmore's case, there was an abstaining vote, as well as in Mr. Drummond, or Dr. Drummond's case, and that in his review of that, there has been no violation of Kansas statutes as it relates to any conflict of interest in either of these alleged comments. Another point that I would like to make just about the TLC facility, just in my review of that, just for some clarity here, and that is that, and I've mentioned this, I think, to the community member who spoke also, is that this district has been providing classroom services on the campus of TLC since began in 1994 in August. At that time, Sherri Love was the CEO of TLC. Walter Carter was Director of Student Services, and I was providing support for alternative education. Mark Crumey, who's our Director of Alternative Ed right now, was the first teacher in our program for suspended and expelled students. We got him away from, I think, a Topeka School District at the time. We wanted a classroom that was not on the school district campus. We found a basement classroom there. We assigned Board of Education staff. We added a second classroom the next year, and that program continues to thrive there, and it's been a very important part of providing education to youngsters that have met some difficult challenges, and at the same time, it contributes to the safety of our students. We started our first dropout prevention program on the TLC property that's now outgrown that. It went to Mill Creek Center and will be part of PLC in the future. And then, in 2002, prior to Dr. Drummond's arrival CEO, we began discussion about putting additional staff on campus there, because as some people may not be aware, as temporary children come through that program, all children are there required by us to educate. And then, secondly, the children that were coming through TLC, many of them had not been in a regular school, sometimes not in school at all, and it was very traumatic for them to go into our regular schools, and it was a challenge for our staff. And so, since about 2002, 2003, we've had additional teachers on staff to take care of the children that are neglected, abused, or may be in some challenged environment to educate them on site. Those programs have been Board of Education-approved programs on that campus site, regardless of the facility, and it's been a location that has served us well prior to any discussion about facilities. We've outgrown the space there, and also the equity. You talked about equity of facilities tonight, equity of facilities. I'd be glad to take you over there to look at that, to see what we need to support our staff who teach there and do very quality services, and I think the new facility there will meet all of the Board's goals. So, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because we get confused that this is sort of an independent piece, and we've had a long history of Board of Education programs placed at that site, serving children effectively.
Good. Thank you very much for those comments. Do we have other patrons here who wish to make public comment? We do. Mr. Briggs. Thank you for coming. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Arlen Briggs. I reside at 21415 West 105th Street here in Olathe. Several months ago, I addressed this Board concerning the open meetings, and that was prior to you making a decision to do that. I've given each one of you a prepared statement that I've made, and I'd like to comment on that. I would like to thank you for your recent decision to broadcast comments from the public. Mr. Churchman, a special thanks to you for leading the way in this area. It is significant that you campaigned on this issue, then followed through once you were elected. This in no way reduces the gratefulness I have to the remaining members in this area. The issue was openly debated, and in the end, the right action was taken. It is an excellent example of how elected officials should debate issues and arrive at a conclusion, whether it is in total agreement or not. In this case, it was in agreement, and we are thankful for that. What can the Board now do to make the dissemination of information from the Board meetings more I would propose the Board place the audio and/or video of the meetings on the district website. If this was done, anyone would have access to the meetings at any time, provided they had access to the Internet. No longer would the TV schedule dictate when the information was accessible. I could go at any time if I had the Internet and hear that. I have spoken to Douglas Kapler, the Ecom teacher at Olathe Northwest High School, about the possibility of this capability. Currently, Olathe Northwest does not own the needed software, but he estimated it can be purchased for $500 or less. I personally know where you can get the software free at Shareware. As Olathe Northwest has a focus on technology, it would seem to be a good fit to have students in the related programs undertake this function. This would provide a good training opportunity of a real-life application while keeping the cost to a minimum. Mr. Kapler mentioned Lincoln Public Schools in Lincoln, Nebraska, as currently having the meetings broadcast from their website. I would encourage you to visit their website, which I've listed below, it's lps.org, to listen to their past meetings. Interestingly enough, they have some very good content in the current meeting you might find very interesting. It's talking about negotiation of salaries and different things, and No Child Left Behind, which I just heard mentioned here, so it is an interesting thing to listen to. At a recent Board meeting, Dr. Drummond and Dr. All noted the achievements of the district. I would encourage us not to rest on our laurels, but to continue to strive for excellence, and I would believe this one way we could further improve our district there. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. Good ideas. We appreciate it. Any others willing to make, wanting to make public comments this evening? Thank you. We'll move on to our, back to our agenda, and Chris, you're on. Seems like you're the always the one we kind of bump back. We apologize for that. You're so flexible and willing. We appreciate that. Enrollment growth at junior high facilities.
Okay. This is kind of a companion piece to the September Board Report on Elementary School Growth. This is focusing on, obviously, the junior highs and how the district's enrollment is affecting them. Back in September, we learned, we saw that the district had its largest increase ever of 1,173 students. That was increasing our total to 24,700. Out of that total, is there a problem?
We were just looking for the hard copy of this, and I --
Oh, I'm sorry.
We maybe didn't get that copied. So, we'll get the electronic out to you.
Sorry about that.
And then, out of that total, there was five thousand four hundred and sixty-two that were junior high students. Today, or as of last Friday, we're up to five thousand five hundred and twenty-five. So, this is a sixty-three student increase throughout the course of the school year, and it's a hundred and thirty-two students since September twentieth of last year. What this enrollment means, even though it's only a hundred and thirty-two students, it is spread across the district, and different schools are performing differently, as you can see from the chart there. You've got some schools that are experiencing some small growth, like California Trail with twenty students. You've got Prairie Trail, which has gained a hundred and thirty students over there, and this is from the past year and a half, since September, since September, September twentieth of 'oh-four. Some students have lost some population, such as Indian Trail and Oregon Trail, and then Pioneer Trail gained forty-four students. And really, what this means is that it kind of goes back to the life cycle of an elementary school, which we've given you in your Board Report, the historic enrollment patterns for all the junior highs back to nineteen seventy-six. And what you'll find is that you'll have a junior high that will open and increase in population, will then open another junior high school, and the population will drop. It will then continue to climb again when we open another junior, get into a high level. We'll open another junior high, it'll drop, and in Prairie, in Pioneer's Trail cases here, it's kind of stayed stable to lately start, starting to increase. And then, one of the things it does, we've done to help prepare for that increase, is add a multipurpose room to the gym this past year, or this school year. Another school, Oregon Trail, you kind of see the exact same thing happening. It opens, increases, Indian Trail opens, Pioneer Trail opened, Prairie Trail opened, and to get it ready for the growth that we're projecting, a multipurpose room was added this year. And as we've talked about in several presentations now, the two things that really increased class sizes or grade sizes in the Olathe School District is residential construction, as well as promoting classes from, promotion of classes, because as we've talked about at the last meeting, our smallest, our biggest classes are kindergarten first and second. And so, every year, so as we promote classes, our junior high and senior high enrollments are going to increase. But looking at the building permits there, you can look at, this graph is showing you building permits by junior high. And what you can see is that the Prairie Trail has, this past year, had seven hundred and seven building permits. And the map here kind of shows graphically where those building permits are located, scattered throughout the area. That's sixty percent of all the building permits that were issued in the district, were issued within the Prairie Trail attendance area. And they had six hundred and twenty-four of those were single-family units, which were fifty-eight percent of the single-family houses constructed in the district were in the Prairie Trail attendance area. Secondly, the second junior high with the number of building permits was Oregon Trail, which is kind of a reflection of the growth, the shift in growth that we're seeing in the district. Historic, for several years, the growth had always been to the south and east of the district. Now, we're seeing it shift to the north and the northwest. And so, Oregon Trail and Pioneer Trail, or Prairie Trail for that matter, are a reflection of that. Chisholm Trail is, would be third, having a hundred and seventy-eight building permits, and, which would only be fifteen percent of the district's total. The other thing that we talked about is feeder schools, or increasing enrollment through promotion. Most of our junior highs have three and a half to four elementary schools that feed them. As you can see there, California Trail has three and a half schools, Pioneer three and a half, Frontier three and a half, and Indian Trail three and a half. Oregon Trail has five schools that feed it. Chisholm Trail has four schools that feed it, and it will, in 'oh-seven, have a fifth school added to that, to that list. Prairie Trail has four and a half schools that go to it, and Santa Fea Trail has, has four and a half. In essence, Prairie Trail really has five, because most of the students from Meadow Lane actually end up going to Prairie Trail. So, what does all this mean for enrollments? What we're showing here is the, first of all, the maximum, what each school has held, the average enrollment for each school, and then what we're putting that in context of what we're expecting the school to do over the next three years. As you can see, we've got, a lot of our schools are going to be staying stable, but we've got a couple that are going to be experiencing some rather large increases. Prairie Trail, we're expecting to go from its current enrollment of seven hundred and forty-five students up to over a thousand students. In the history of the district, we've only had one school for one year go above a thousand students, and that was Indian Trail back in nineteen eighty-four, so about almost twenty, over twenty years ago. Otherwise, we've been, managed to keep our schools at their maximum in a low nine hundred. And so, what we want to do is kind of just focus a little bit on Prairie Trail and Chisholm Trail, since those are the two schools that we're projecting to grow the most in the next few years. Here are the boundaries of Prairie Trail. You can see the location of the schools that feed it, Fairview, Ravenwood, Cedar Creek, Manchester Park, and Meadow Lane. The school district has also acquired two school sites that right now would be situated within the Prairie Trail attendance area. That would be one on Woodland Road and one at Ninety-Fifth and Claire. Its enrollment history, has a very short enrollment history of two years, where it's had six hundred and twenty-two students and seven hundred and forty-five students. Over the next four years, we're showing that, we're projecting that enrollment to increase by almost, over a hundred students a year, and by two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that number increased into over a hundred and fifty students a year. And as we've said in previous Board Reports, we're identifying Prairie Trail as an emerging issue that would need an enrollment relief plan by two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight school year. This enrollment relief plan could be one of four kind of standard options the district has when dealing with schools that are needing enrollment relief. The first one is increasing the staffing levels and the class size. Right now, at Prairie Trail, the average core class, which would be your math, your science, your English, and your social studies, is at twenty-three point four students. Build an addition. Right now, Prairie Trail has not received an addition, and there is no, and the site, and so we can't really, and there's no money budgeted for an addition, but that is an option to expand the building, is to put an addition on it. What the size or what the cost of that addition would be, would really be dependent upon working with the principal at the school and, and trying to, and what the Board's objectives with that addition are, how many students that addition should hold, for how long it should hold and that. So, it's really not possible this time to give a size or a cost of what that addition would look like at Prairie Trail, if that was the direction, or part of a direction the Board chose to go. Another option is boundary adjustments. There are only two schools that have joined Prairie Trail. Those are Oregon Trail and Santa Fe Trail. As we've kind of talked about, Oregon Trail is, is, their attendance area, the second most, second highest number of building permits being issued in it, and because of that, we're looking at, for Oregon Trail to begin growing again, going from its current enrollment of six hundred and twenty students to seven hundred and sixty-nine. Santa Fe Trail is, is also going to grow, not near as fast as Santa Fe Trail, but it will grow at a, it will grow slightly. And then, the fourth option is to construct a new junior high school. Right now, the district owns two sites. They're kind of marked by the flags here, one at a hundred and twenty-seventh in Lakeshore, one at Ninety-Fifth in Monticello. There's no money budgeted for these schools, either through capital outlay or through a bond. And so, the funding for that will be dependent upon, funding a new junior high will be dependent upon a bond cycle of when that happens. But to design and, or to build a new junior high, we budget at least eighteen months for that, on top of the design and passing the bond issue. So, you're looking at several, building a new junior high is really several years down the road as an option. Chisholm Trail is the other school. Chisholm Trail is the junior high that serves south Olathe. It's got a very long, skinny boundary, as you can see from the map there. It goes all the way from the eastern district boundary to the western district boundary. And Chisholm Trail is located pretty much in the center of where it draws from. It's fed by Scarborough, Brom, Arbor Creek, Sunnyside, and then there's also a flag here marking the site that the district acquired and just hired an architect and engineer designed for Elementary School Thirty-two. It's enrolled for the past two years. What you've seen in the, in the charts that you've been provided, is that it's had a slow but steady enrollment increase. What we're expecting, though, is that enrollment increase to really start taking off in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and forward. And the reason for that is because of the feeder school, as we, the feeder schools that feed it. The fourth grade class at our, when you add up the fourth grade class at Arbor Creek, Brom, Scarborough, and Sunnyside, you're kind of a class of over three hundred students. That class is going to grow in size through people moving into the area as it, as it works its way through. But what you're looking at in five years from now would be having over nine hundred students at Chisholm Trail. And so, because of the fact that this isn't, this isn't a, or a long-term issue, at least in the scope of the district here, long-term being three to four years, it's recommended that an enrollment relief, relief plan be in place by two thousand and eight, and it can consist of, one of the three options, which again, is increase the staffing levels and class size. Its core class size is twenty-two point five students. Build an addition, same thing. As with Prairie Trail, there's no money budgeted for an addition, but, and money would have to either come from capital outlay or bond funds, or do a boundary adjustment.
Mr. Graylip, if I could just interrupt you for a moment.
Sure.
Increasing class sizes, is that a workable solution? Not saying an ideal one, but you put it up here as an option. I'd like to know, would that work or would it not?
What it does is, increasing class size for these growing schools is really, I would say, would be, could be part of a solution if you're looking to buy time for something. If all of a sudden, for Prairie Trail's case, let's say you're looking to build a school, and it's going to open in two thousand and nine, and you're like going, okay, we can, if we increase class size to twenty-six, that would buy us a year. So, I would say it isn't a solution that's going to solve a problem, but it could be part of a solution.
Okay, thank you. That's important for us to know as we look at this. Thank you.
I'm going to ask also, Dr. Beninkaski, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, that I know in teaching and learning, you look at the data and the statistics of that, and so I'm going to ask for, Chris, a second opinion on that class size and the growth that we put into classrooms.
I certainly think that we have been able to celebrate in this district a good PTR, a pupil-teacher ratio, which helps with instruction, but also assists with developing relationship between the teacher and students. The more students that a teacher has, more difficult to develop those relationships that we know are so important for instructional improvement. So, while it is possibly something that could be done on a very small scale, very, not much more, and for a very short-term amount of time, I don't know if it's something instructionally we want to look at as a long-term. I also think we certainly heard resoundingly from our community conversation that many people in very different groups believe that class size should be maintained. So, I do believe that's a variable that certainly is an option for a short term, but it would depend on what you were looking at possibly for that. We certainly have had short-term occasions where, for example, and a grade was a little bit higher, and we've hired a pair, a teacher A to assist that teacher, but it still is not the same as having a smaller, fewer pupil, a PTR.
And if I could just add a couple of things there. One of the things we're also saying is increase staffing levels, which involves having more traveling teachers. Prairie Trail, for instance, has two teachers that travel right now, while California Trail has twelve teachers that travel. So, when we say it, it's just not increase classing size, it could be increasing staffing levels to have traveling teachers, which is again, something that the district has worked to minimize. And second, we're not, these are just kind of options to present to the Board, the full array of what options are available. We are definitely not recommending one option or another. We're just wanting to make sure the Board's aware of all the options that are on the table.
And Mr. Graylip, just for clarity, I don't want anybody to think I am endorsing the increased class sizes. I just want to understand, as we start to absorb this in our mind, and you've answered the question quite well, it's a short-term action that might be tentative at best, but it certainly is not a holistic action that will offset some of these other options on the table. Thank you.
Did you have something, Dr. All?
I just was indicating that part of this is really to get the concept out of where the focus is on growth, and to give a sense of time. And, you know, we've had this discussion that we need to get ahead
Good.
of some of this. And secondly, we want to make sure that, that the communities who experience that growth know that we know, that the growth is there, and that we're taking a look at it. And then, furthermore, a lot of the questions are being asked tonight. I'm hoping, whether it's tonight, or as you then would encourage you to email me, we'll compile these questions, and then we'll start doing our sort of data analysis and fine-tuning that, and hopefully, we can do that within the next, you know, couple of months for you to come back to say, here's some, you know, begin to develop some scenarios, and for you, and the pros and cons of each of those. But I think this timeframe, and trying to get a time sequence here, is what Chris is trying to achieve tonight, to say, we're looking at this level, and, and we'll come back and kind of do a high school picture as well, because some of these things begin building on each other.
Just a couple more slides here. As we talked about, one of the options at Chisholm Trail's a boundary, is, would be adjust the boundaries of that school. Here, Chisholm Trail actually joins three schools, Frontier Trail, Indian Trail, and Oregon Trail. We've kind of already talked about Oregon Trail of how it's growing. Indian Trail is holding pretty steady there. Its current enrollment's at four hundred and ninety-seven. It's projected enrollment three years from now, four hundred and ninety-seven, so. Frontier Trail, though, another school that right now is actually a fairly big school, but what we're projecting over the next three years is it's going to decline by a hundred students. So, you've got some schools that are, Chisholm Trail's got a school that's growing, a school that's stable, and a school that's declining slightly, that adjoins its boundaries. And so, as Dr. All alluded to, what we're really looking for tonight is just kind of introduce the Board to this topic, get areas that the Board would like additional research on, different, different avenues to explore. So, when we come back in a couple of months, we can have a presentation that really addresses and meets all the Board's different needs, and allows them to be comfortable in whatever decision or course they take.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Graylip. But just to confirm, you indicated that the total enrollment in the junior highs has grown by sixty-three students.
This year.
This year. I assume that's post September twentieth. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Deener, the, the funding for those sixty-three is contained in our four hundred and fifty student contingency. Is that correct?
Can you start?
The question. These, if I understand correctly, we grew by sixty-three students post-final audit of our, of our total student body, and that's, just want to confirm, that's what that four hundred and fifty contingency funding allocation is for? Any students that come in after that date?
That is correct, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I would be interested in seeing information related to the functional capacity of the schools.
Okay.
And I'd also like to make sure we revisit the discussion around the two thousand, I believe it was two thousand and three, boundary adjustments related to when Prairie, Prairie Trail was coming on, and we talked about a number of options there and settled on certain things, and I frankly need to revisit that, and need to know what was said, and what was committed, and what actions we took to be refreshed, and include that in this discussion.
Absolutely.
I agree with that. There's already a number of people in the community reaching out, and I, for one, would like to understand what all went into those decisions, and I don't know the, the history behind it, but I agree with you, Mr. Gilmore.
You missed it, Jim.
I missed it. Sounds like round two's coming, though.
No, it's, it's important discussion, and I know there's good information there.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? We'll have more information, more discussion about this topic. Even if we wanted to avoid it, we can't, so it's going to come back, and we'll have an opportunity to, to synthesize more information, and have hearings, and talk with parents, and community members, and arrive, I think, at a very good decision in this process. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your patience, Chris. We'll move forward with the consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that represent matters the Board may approve without detailed discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed for a separate discussion as an action item on the request of the Superintendent or any Board member. The Board has received supporting information on all items prior to the consent agenda. I will read through the consent agenda for the public real quickly. Minutes, Treasuries Report, Accounts Payable Register, Human Resource Actions, Recommendations for Employment, Leaves of Absence, so on and so forth, student trips, other things related to curriculum and textbooks, student fees, economic development grant, election costs, Head Start, change orders, easements, and there's bids, purchases, agreements, contracts, and leases. So, we have those items before us. Are there any items that you wish to take off and discuss before we move forward with the consent agenda?
Dr. Drummond, I'd like to talk about student fees, please.
Sure.
And is, are you saying bids are part of the consent agenda, or is that separate?
It's, it's in the consent agenda.
It's in there. Okay. I'd also like to talk about the bids at Prairie Learning Center and also at Regency Place, please.
Sure. Anybody else have discussion items?
I would like to have a discussion about the number of days that students potentially can be absent from school for purposes of field trips, trips to the Citrus Bowl, Rob
can be absent from school for purposes of field trips, trips to the citrus bowl, robotics, all of those kinds of things, because we've seen a number of requests for these types of trips. And I assume that they're merited trips based on the recommendations from the principals. But I'd like to understand what the district policy is on the number of days that students can miss for these kinds of trips.
We can bring, it would probably be appropriate to bring a report back. Would that be okay?
We don't have a written policy, to my understanding, but I think we could get some data on that and let you know, because many of these trips are very different students. So, okay, we'll do that.
That would be acceptable.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Churchman.
On student fees, direct this towards the staff and mainly to Dr. All and Dr. Banakowski. First off, I was very impressed when I read the report, Dr. Banakowski, of your funding intent and things of that nature. Also want to compliment the staff on the efforts that have gone over, on over time to keep fees low, particularly in the area of transportation, food services. I think that's a real tribute to the efficiency of the district. I don't have an issue personally with the fee structures that are outlined here. I do think we have an opportunity to do some unique and innovative things that I'd like to propose to Dr. All and to the board, and really consist of three actions. The first of which is, as we talk to teachers, and I've gone out and talked to approximately 35 teachers, and they continue to tell me that they take out of their pockets anywhere each year from, I've heard 250 to $1,500. I would like to ask for Dr. All to work with, Dr. Banakowski, and the principals, and budget more funding that will be specifically dedicated towards the, the principals for the purpose of giving to the teachers to continue to offset those funds that they take out of their pockets, particularly as we talk about compensation on teachers. Certainly then, having them spend their own money is something that we need to work against, and I think we have an opportunity to do that. The second thing that I'd like to put before the board for consideration is to study a family plan fee structure that will give an opportunity for fee relief to families that have multiple children in the district, and I think that needs to be defined as to what that looks like. And then the third piece is, Dr. Banakowski, I want to make sure that we put in place the procedures, and I know to a large degree it's all around the district, but any children that want to have access to orchestra or those types of things that are financially disadvantaged, have the opportunity where we give them dispensation to be able to participate in those programs. It's been interesting, as I've talked to Dr. All and Mrs. Wilhelm and others over the past several days, about the correlation between students that are in music, their improved learning ability, their improved math ability, and also their improved responsibility level. And I correlate that back to the study we, we heard here tonight on community conversations about student accountability and attendance and things of those natures. So I think we can, I would like to see us look at those three things, and I welcome feedback from the board. I think it's actions that we can take in a fiscally responsible manner and, and have a chance for some balanced innovation.
Good, thank you. Assuming that these are studies and discussions you want to have going forward, not necessarily pertaining to consent agenda as it exists now.
That's correct. I, I welcome board feedback. I mean, I do specifically want to see us put programs in place for those three things, but it, it is not specific to the approval of the student fees this evening.
I think that's very doable, isn't it, Dr. Banakowski and Dr. All? Kind of take a look at these issues, the family fees.
Did Harlan, did you want to say?
And, Mr. Churchman, those are all excellent thoughts and excellent ideas, and I would be supportive of that as well. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. Especially like number two, the family plan for students, kind of like a multi-car discount. I couldn't resist. We need to have a little fun tonight.
Since we're having fun, I would like to make that retroactive till about five years ago.
But, but in all seriousness, I, I would like to move, to look at that seriously.
It's like, I was telling Dr. All, it's like a, a family pool pass. You have one fee for the entire family, instead of having multiple fees for all the kids, just have one fee. And I think that's, if something has a lot of merit and we can explore, and I think it probably can be done without a lot of administrative hassles and all of that.
You know, the first thought I, that I had, when Jim and I do think they're excellent suggestions, the family plan, for instance, the first thing that flashed through my mind was not so much the family plan as those who have, you know, low SES status, the same thing with the instruments. Was it more effective there? But then again, I know there are things done in the district on a regular basis about those kind of things, and, and I'm hoping we can bring that information back and, and study that all at the same time.
I think, I'd like to bring back, you know, and just kind of refresh the board on your policy, you know, that, that indicates that we reduce fees by 50% for families that complete the free and reduced lunch application, and then principals have the authority under board policy to further reduce as they work with families. But it does require the family to fill out, voluntarily fill out the free and reduced lunch piece. So I think what we might want to do is look at what happens if that's not done, but we see a child in need, you know? And, and then again, how can we maybe bring some consistency so that if children that are being introduced to new instrument or whatever, we've got a lot of creative things our staff do. We find instruments, provide instruments. Dr. Banakowski had an idea to have a community drive to, for all of us who played an instrument for one or two years, who might have it at home someplace in storage, to bring it back out, that we could refurbish. So I think we could come back and, and provide you just with some of the things we're currently doing, and maybe we could strengthen some of those things for activities. Because another thing I think we can tell by research, and it's another study we're doing internally, when kids are connected to music, when they're connected to theater, when they're connected to athletics, when they're connected to debate, or any other activity like that, they're less likely to drop out of school, their GPA is higher, and they're more likely to be a productive student while we have them and, and probably later on. And so I think we can come back and talk about that a little bit, and then look to see whether or not our children that might be in poverty, whether we're getting the representation we want in some of those areas. So with a little time, I think we could bring some information back to you, and, and we'll work on that.
Dr. All, I'll tell you that for Christmas, my six-year-old son got a drum set, and I'm ready to donate that now to the district, so.
We should meet our standards.
I'll help you meet it standard if we need to.
We should have talked on instrument selection.
Lesson learned.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Pollan.
Just reviewing here, since we're going to be talking about, I think with Mr. Norris later on, about conflict of interest, I have a question here as far as the bids down here. I am Kansas City Mechanical, one of the subcontractors on these contracts, is a direct customer of mine. So should I pull that out and excuse myself from the room when that is approved?
Mr. Norris, you want to render opinion up front here, please?
I will if word requested I give an opinion.
Please do.
Well, this is, we're taking action on it now, so I think I need to know that now.
Well, because I don't know much about the background of this, I would urge caution and ask you to pull it from the agenda until we have a chance to talk more detail about the agenda.
I would suggest that we pull it then, and then when we vote on that, that I leave the room, if that's acceptable.
Sure is.
Okay.
Let's go ahead for the purpose of our agenda at this point, vote on the consent agenda, polling item G, and that we'll take action on at a separate time. So that means.
Dr. Drummond, I had two other questions on the consent agenda briefly.
Sure.
Just briefly on Prairie Learning Center, I'm just curious as to why the bidders would suggest the removal of two classrooms as an alternative.
They didn't. Those were bid alternates that as a staff we asked for.
Okay, very good.
Those were items that we were considering as cost reduction items, and we asked for those. They didn't offer, they didn't volunteer.
Okay, good. Thank you. And as we go forward, particularly with planning for various things, I'm always curious as to how the construction costs come in versus what we'd anticipated from a budgetary or an estimated perspective. So how do the, the costs here compare to what we had expected?
They, compared to the construction manager's estimate, which is listed on the bid summary also, we were about $600,000 less than the construction manager's estimate. As I think we're all aware, we've been talking for the last several years about inflation and construction costs. Construction costs of this project's obviously more than we had originally perceived it back years ago. But based upon recent events and the estimate from the drawings, we were less than the construction manager's estimate on this project and Regency Place also.
Okay, because I had the same question for Regency Place. And just one other point on Regency Place, at what point in time would the board be able to look at some, some plans for that, just for edification?
Anytime you'd like to.
Okay.
We could present, we do not have, on a project that's small, we really don't ever come up with what you might call design drawings, you know, a rendering or, or, you know, sort of the nice colored floor plans that you would normally present for a larger project. But we have working drawings that we'd be glad to share. I can pull, you know, sheets out of, out of the working drawings if you'd like to see those, or I can get you a complete set of working drawings that are available anytime you'd like to see them.
Okay. And Dr. All, a lot of that is predicated on, we came away from the Regency Place situation with some to-dos around flex space and how we'd look at, you know, the cafeteria situation. Is that something we need to address and those kinds of things?
And how do you want, kind of clarify that in relationship, are you talking about in relationship to Prairie Learning Center or in a general?
I'm skipped over to Regency Place.
Oh, we went back to Regency Place. Okay, okay. I was still back on Prairie Learning Center. So in terms of what's there and what the, tell me again, refresh my memory.
One is just wanting to see what it looks like, and we can simply do that according to Mr. Thompson.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But then the other one is just, it'll be, can be a separate conversation, but how do we check off those other issues that we said we needed to come back and revisit at Regency Place to make sure that they're addressed?
Okay. Including the, are you talking about the undeveloped land and?
The undeveloped land and the flex space cafeteria issues. And I, I don't really know to the extent that those need action, but we did say that we would address those.
Yeah, those, those would be things that I'd want to visit with Greg O'Borne about. He's been working very closely and his staff in the plans here, both in the utilization of that space, and then how that impacts the lunchroom situation with the number of students and whatever. So we can get a report from Greg.
Okay, very good.
I just need to get.
To help with that, he, Mr. O'Borne's been a part of the design team from the beginning. We continue to have our meetings at his school, and he's participated in all of them.
Great.
So I feel fairly comfortable, I don't want to speak for Greg, but at the same time, I'm fairly comfortable that what's reflected in the drawings is his understanding of what he felt was needed there.
We just need to share that.
So the principals have been a part of it from the beginning, and he's, he's acknowledged that what we're doing is what he would like us to be doing.
Very good, thank you.
We just need to get some information back to the board so that we can, you can see what's there. Okay.
Good, thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Not, we can move forward with a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item G, which we will consider later on in our agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion.
Actually, items G, one and two, really, because there are three and four right in there.
I just thought we pulled the whole thing off.
Okay.
Whole G thing.
All of G, all of G.
All of G.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Next, we move on to action items and take a look at our bond sale and issuance of bonds. I think we have some representatives here. Randy, if you'd lead us through this discussion, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Today, we held the bond sale for the, are you guys ready?
We're ready. We may not look like it, but we're ready.
Two percent?
Two percent. Oh, no. For the, the second issue of the 2003 bond referendum. If you like what Marty's going to tell you in a little bit, there are two actions that you will be required to do tonight. One is to accept the best bid, and the second is to approve the resolution before you in your packet. And I'll let Marty from Springstead, the district's financial advisor, speak to the results of the bond election today.
Thank you, Randy. Welcome, Marty.
Thanks. Today, we did have the bond sale. Over 500 different firms were invited to participate. We conducted the sale through an electronic platform known as Parity, which is this, the fourth or fifth bond issue that the district sold on electronic platform. There were 11 groups bidding. It's a very high number of bidding groups, and they represented over 42 firms throughout the country. UBS Payne-Weber was the winning bid with a blended true interest cost of 3.98%. Their interest rates ranged from 3.5% to 4.5%. The difference between the low bid and the high bid was nine one hundredth of 1%, very tight pack in there. Second place was Wachovia Bank at a 4.01%. UBS chose an option to ensure a portion of the bonds, those bonds maturing from 2013 to 2018, at their cost. The premium they paid for that was $27,500, which moves the bond credit structure from a AA3, the district's rating, to a AAA rated interest rate. UBS submitted a premium bid, which generated $791,000 additional money that they're going to pay the district, and that'll be added to the project account. We also bid out the investment of the bond proceeds that'll be invested during the construction period while you're holding it there. We used a flexible repurchase agreement, was the vehicle we asked for bids on, which is allowed under state law. We received five bids. The best bid was 4.66%. They'll pay you on a fixed rate basis, and then you draw down money as the construction occurs. We've used that vehicle for a number of times for the district. The good and bad news is, we've got a very high reinvestment rate. In fact, it's higher than the bond rate. And under federal law is, you can keep that excess earnings until the fifth anniversary, and then you have to pay an arbitrage rebate sum back to the IRS to help them out. We estimate that that'll be somewhere between $200,000 and $400,000. The district did receive a reaffirmation of your current ratings, A3 and A minus, and we have a closing scheduled for February 23rd. Be glad to answer any questions in the process.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Just real quick, what's the interest rate compared to what we just refinanced?
Well, the refinancing was a very short time period, so it's not comparable. We did comparison to other transactions that have occurred recently, most specifically the Board of Regents of Iowa sold a $25 million deal yesterday. They're a slightly higher credit quality than you are, at a AA2, and you beat them by about 50 basis points. So you got a very attractive bid.
So, Mr. Noah, did we get a, a rate that was better than what you had expected?
We projected slightly higher, or slightly lower rates a month ago, but the short-term market, as you well know, has moved up slightly. So it's, it's better than we expected going into today, and you outsold the national market by about three-fourths of 1%. But Kansas paper always sells good, well, and the late school district always sells well.
The five-year timeframe on the arbitrage goes from the date of issuance of these bonds about five years, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And Gilmore and Bell is going to prepare a, an estimate based on your current draw schedule estimate against the interest earnings to, to try to quantify that liability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? As I understand it, we have two motions to make.
Correct.
First one is a motion to accept the lowest bid submitted by Payne-Weber, is that?
UBS Payne-Weber.
UBS.
Investment.
Would anybody would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the recommendation before us. Any further discussion? Ms. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate your good work and...
Good job, as always. Thank you.
We like your good results.
Thank you, Randy.
I think what we'll do, Mr. Norris is here, but we'll go ahead and finish our action items and then move with the approval of the board, move to our executive session since Mr. Norris is here, and then come back and do a couple, do an action item and the other items. But first, we need to set a special meeting for February. You see the dates, 14th, 15th, 16th, or 21st. We've kind of gone back and forth in terms of when this might fit people's schedule. The last I understood, and I could be corrected here, that the 21st seemed to be the date that would best fit all of the board members. Is that correct? February 21st? Get some nods.
Whose birthday is it?
We'll talk about that on February 21st.
I do have a slight conflict, but it's not anything you should reschedule the meeting for, and I will try my best to work around it.
Good.
What time?
6:30.
6:30?
That's what we have down here.
Or would you like, or would you like six? Is that when we start at?
Six.
Starting at six? What fits you?
Six is great.
Six is okay with you?
Yep.
As good as any? Six o'clock, okay?
Can you all make six?
Dr. All will cook for us, so we'll be in good shape there. Okay, we need to have a motion to set a special meeting at 6:00 on February 21st.
So moved.
Pollan? Moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. We'll have our special board meeting on the 21st at 6:00. If you turn to the last page, number eight, we'll go ahead and...
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
We need to have the bids. We need to vote on the bids.
On G?
I thought we'd do that after our executive session.
After executive.
Yeah.
The only, I just want to bring this up. If we did that, we've got some staff here that maybe could leave if they needed to, but I'm just totally up to you, because that's the only action piece you have left. So...
Dr. Drummond, might I suggest, for the sake of surety, Mr. Pollan, you could excuse yourself. We could take action on the item.
Yes.
And then we can go into session from there. That way, not chasing you out of the room, but that way you won't be involved in discussion or voting.
Good idea.
And we can take care of the business.
The only challenge with that is he'll be the first one to the brownies, and I'm not. Okay, let's go back then and entertain a motion to accept item G.
Mr. President, I would move that we would move for, we would accept item G, bids, purchases, agreements, contracts, and leases.
Thank you. A motion from Mr. Parker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilmore to accept the item G, bids, purchases, agreements, contracts, and leases. Any further discussion? Ms. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll recess in executive session till 7:50. Carpenter, please note on the record that we've turned from executive session. We'll move very quickly to the informational items, and we will return to executive session, and we'll need another motion at that time. Informational items, you have several before you. These are future action items that we will be attending to in the next board meeting or two. I'll just go through them very quickly, and you can, of course, ask questions. Budget development update, curriculum, textbooks, student trips, Head Start program. So with that, Dr. All, is there any comments you want to make about one of these?
Well, I was looking at here, there were a couple people I probably would have asked, I didn't expect everybody to leave, but the, to come back, but the budget development update is just a continuous work in that area. But I wanted to highlight there that this is the time, if you have ideas for cost avoidance initiatives for us to look into, this, you know, in the next few weeks, this is the time to share those with me so that we can take a look at that, because that's what we're doing with our staff as part of this process. And it would be good timing now as opposed to June or July or August. And so if there's something that's been on your mind, you want us to take a look at, you have a question about, have we thought of this? And you may or may not have any of those, but we're taking a look in every division and trying to make sure we're doing what we need to be doing. So we just wanted to not leave you out of this process. And so that, that's the key piece in this particular report. And then the curriculum, textbooks, and instructional materials, that's the Lath East Leadership Program curriculum. And again, that's always a month ahead here. And if at any point on this time, when it's a month ahead, that you want to pick up the curriculum to take home, or if it were textbooks to take home, or do that, just always let me know, and I'll have those ready for you, or we can get them to you next week. And then our student trips, this is the beginning of trying to transition so that you have the student trip request a month ahead, so that if you do have questions, that we have time to follow up before you're asked to take action on it, action on it at the consent agenda time. So see how that looks. And so like even tonight, you could just email me your questions, and then I will follow up with staff, and I'll make sure everybody on the board gets that information, and then we can check that out. And then Head Start program update and planning, Dr. George is here on that particular topic. But we're, you're the fiscal agent for Head Start, and so information comes to you as a board in that area. Kevin is your board representative on the Head Start Advisory Board for this year. Dr. Daniels was in the prior years. So that's a connection from this board to their board. And you're going to be getting some additional information from Kim Sil and Gary George in the future, as we're really looking to carefully study what's happening in Head Start, whether there's any ways we can reallocate some resources there, and is there any way that we can serve more children? So those are the things that are under study right now, and I don't know, Gary, if there